All right, we'll get this called to order if I could, please. This is our listening session on July 22nd. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We do have a quorum. We're short a couple of folks, but we have a quorum, and so we'll continue to move forward on this. So we have folks who had called ahead, and we're going to make sure that we get them in. Pat, Jean, Laura, very good, Sally, Anita's not here, Carol, Carol, and Sheila and Cheryl, I don't see them, and Robert, you want to talk? You just hanging out?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough. All right. So one, two, three, four. Why don't we, why don't we give everybody about six, seven minutes here? What we try and do is parse it out, so everybody gets an even amount of time. It depends on how many folks we have signed up ahead of time. I did, I got a couple of calls from Anita over the weekend, so I'm assuming she's going to be here eventually, or she will not. Anita's not going to be here?
The town's meeting.
The town's meeting, okay. So, yeah, well, then, why don't we look at like, seven, eight, nine minutes for, we'll get through this, and we'll make sure that we have enough time for everybody. So, good evening, and if you could, if you could state your name for the record, and we'll, off we go. So, go ahead.
I'm Patricia Gernbacher, and I have three items that you also have in front of you. This is about a data exchange and information from the University of Minnesota and City of Bloomington. And I am currently speaking with Leah, and I believe they'll be setting up a meeting for this information. That is the first one, is I hope all goes well. I hope I have your approval.
I don't know what you're, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You're always welcome to me with city staff, and they, Leah and Ann have done a great job. I'm assuming it's going to be about the Health and Wellness Center, and they have been meeting with folks all over the place.
It's Creekside, correct.
Creekside and Health and Wellness, yes, yep. They have been meeting with everybody who needs information or would like to discuss this.
Yes, and this is information that will be going to the Director of the Center of Aging Science and Care Research. Okay, the next piece of information you have is a survey.
Survey itself.
I wanted to point out, before you get the results, that the survey seemed to be weighted, and I wanted you to look at question six. If you look at question six, there is 10% regarding a pool, regarding swimming, and there is 3% regarding a senior center. This is the Bloomington Community Health and Wellness Center survey. I believe it was sent to 4% of the residents in paper form, and it was sent out in, by taking an email survey, and then it was also, there was a paper copy distribution at Creekside Center. I also wanted to point out question seven on the survey, if you'll notice, oh, well, so, on question six, there were no questions on inclusion services. I thought that was rather interesting.
On what services? Inclusion services?
You can see that under question eight, number 14. So on question six, that question was...
Okay, I see that, okay.
Okay, on question eight, it had, quote, number 14. On question eight of the survey, once again, there was 10% of the questions regarding swimming pools, and there was 3% regarding senior programs. I'm wondering the value of the analysis based on the weight percentage of the question. I'm also wondering how to compare lap swimming to senior programs. What value do they compare?
You're asking that as a direct question, and I think that would be a good question for Ann and Leah, when you speak with them, because they're the folks who, in the design of this, and I will say, in the design of the survey, the questions reflect information that we've had in the past. And I know one of the things that we've heard from a vast majority of folks is the interest in aquatics within the new community center. So there, I think the questions, at least, try not to lead, but I think they at least reflect that, that interest that has been stated by the community about an aquatics portion of this. Councilmember?
Yes, thanks for the opportunity, Ms. Mayor. I have a question for you. I guess, I'm, when you say 3%, I am curious about, as an example, what you would, on question six, what you would have included in that 3% or 4% for seniors? Because I wouldn't want you to make an assumption that, for example, an indoor walking track doesn't serve me. I am 54 years old, so I'm just under the qualification for a senior, so I feel like this place is going to be for me, too, eventually, right? And by the end of the year, in fact. So like, would you have included a walking track in your bucket of senior services, or would you not have? Because I would if it was me.
Councilman, I want to refer you to number 23 of question six.
Yep, that's what, that's one.
That is senior center.
Right, that's one, but you said 3%.
That is one question out of 30 for the senior center.
But, okay, so these are, this, if you look at the top, right, it literally says, what recreation facilities add amenities? So amenities are things within a center, like a walking track, like a swimming pool, like, for example, pickleball, which I saw on question eight, which, by the way, I also play as a 54-year-old, right? So I guess I'm, my question to you is, well, let me, let me make the statement I'm making, and you can tell me if you agree or disagree, but I think it's subjective, that you're defining some of these as included for seniors and not included for seniors, and I might have a different set of questions. If I was answering this survey, I might have thought, this covers a bunch of stuff that I like as a senior. I like, I like gaming, but that's irrelevant. But I like, for example, you know, makerspace, crafts and arts. I like outdoor community spaces for movies and festivals. I like, you know, I like this idea of lap swimming. I like this idea of outdoor space to enjoy nature. For me, as a senior, or clearly to be senior, I would feel that I was included, yeah.
In the time span, you will notice that there are three regarding pools, and there is one regarding the senior center. I understand that you think of a senior center as not having these activities?
Nope, nope, I'm not.
Having activities.
I'm reading the question, and I'm saying, following recreation facilities. So facilities, I would agree with you, senior center would be a facility. Amenities are inside the facility, could be any one of these on my list. That was all I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand if we're on the same page about that or not.
We are on the same page. Inside that building, there are three related to pools, and there is one related to a senior center. So it's, yeah.
Understood. And I just have to say, Patricia, we're bumping up against time, and I want to make sure, amount of time, and I appreciate your questions, councilmembers.
Just want to clarify.
Okay.
Absolutely. So if you can cap up in the next minute here, and we can move on to our next speaker.
Oh, I am really, all right. I'm wondering the weight of the questions and the value of the responses based on the weight of the questionnaire. The other thing that I noticed on the questionnaire was that there was, on the online questionnaire, you could not have less than 100. That would be question 15 on the drop-down. Just, you know, there was no way that you could not put in zero on this amount. I'm also, I'm sure you're aware that there were three parts to the survey, and I'm very curious to have how the three parts were combined, but I'm sure we're having a presentation tonight, so...
The presentation tonight, and the meeting, if you're going to meet and set up with Leah and Ann, I'm sure they can answer a majority of these questions much better than we can in terms of...
And the data exchange?
I don't know exactly what they have and the details, but I'm sure they'll provide what they have, and we'll be able to, they will answer their, your questions to the best of...
They facilitate a data exchange?
Again, I believe so, but I don't know exactly what exactly we're looking for, and the specifics would be. So, I'm going to have to cut you off there, and we're going to have to move on, but I appreciate you coming in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
So, I guess before I get started, I'm just...
Don't watch, you got to come up to the table, so we can get you on the microphone, please.
All right, so before I get started, I just wanted some clarification, whether or not there's going to be an opportunity to speak about the wording of the ranked choice voting ballot question at the city council meeting tonight?
I don't think so. I think it's our first discussion with it. I think what the Attorney's Office is going to bring forward, we don't have it scheduled as a public comment or a public hearing in any way, and it's, it's an opportunity to talk about some ideas, and we're not in any, we're not on a drop dead deadline that we've got to make a decision tonight about this either. So I expect it to be kind of a robust conversation among the council tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess, I just, I know I emailed all of you, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it yet or not, but the folks that are on the pro-RCV side, we've got some concerns about the ballot language that was proposed to you guys in your agenda packet. You know, we just, we want to make sure that it's very clear to voters what they're voting on, and the language that we are asking you to consider is the language that was used in Minnetoka last year when they were voting on the same thing. It was language that was decided was the best by both sides. The pro-RCV and the anti-RCV people both agreed that that was the language that was the clearest. And so, we're just asking that that similar language be considered for this ballot measure in Bloomington. It seemed to work well. We think it's important that voters understand that this is an amendment to the city charter, that it is to repeal ranked choice voting, and that it will reinstate the primary. And all of those things are kind of the focus of the petition itself. I mean, I think the petition itself is called Charter Amendment to Repeal Ranked Choice Voting. So I mean, and then within the petition, it talks about reinstating the primary. So I mean, I think, you know, it just makes sense that the ballot language is aligned with the petition itself and is very clear to voters. The part on that proposal that includes the majority stuff is completely confusing, because under ranked choice voting, we get winner through a majority as well. And so, to say that one way is a majority and the other isn't, is very confusing to voters. So, for sure, want that to be taken out of there.
All right. Council, any questions? I appreciate, we received a number, a variety of folks, and have been looking at the language proposed, and yes, in advance of this, I did look at the Minnetoka language from last year, and considered what we've had in the past and how we frame it up, and also, trying to make it as understandable as possible to the potential voters in Bloomington. And, and there's, you know, that's, that's a wide range, so, wide range of folks, so...
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sally?
So, first of all, 82nd and Park and 83rd and Park, they do have streetlights. As I stated at the last listening session, the city center, city manager sent an email July 1st, 2024, that stated, please note that Bloomington lighting standards do not apply to entrance driveways that lead to parking areas. The City of Bloomington does have lighting standards that apply to parking surfaces, private sidewalk surfaces, and building entrance areas. The lighting standards apply to drive aisles within parking areas, but not to driveways leading to... The intent behind the standards is to light areas where pedestrians are likely to be present, whether walking on a sidewalk or walking from a parked car to a building entrance. Pedestrians are not typically present in vehicle driveways that lead to parking areas, which is why the city code does not have lighting standard for these areas. City Code 21301.07, exterior lighting, purpose and intent. The city recognizes the health, safety, welfare, and aesthetic value of providing lighting standards in the community. This section's provisions are intended to, one, promote public health, safety, and general welfare. Number six, protect motor vehicle operators, pedestrians, and adjacent land uses from glare. To be clear, the city code states to protect motor vehicle operators, not just pedestrians, as the city manager's email states. Again, six, state, protect motor vehicles operators. The city code continues, B, lighting plan. The lighting plan must include the following information and attachments. Four, an accurate site plan indicating the location of property lines and all existing and proposed land improvements, including, but not limited to, buildings, parking lots, aisles, and driveways, streets, walkways, and accessory buildings. And then it continues, minimum illumination on parking surface, up to a 50% reduction allowed for the perimeter 25 feet of the parking, loading, access, or other surfaced areas along the property line or ramp. Again, minimum illumination of parking surface of the parking, loading, access, or other surfaced areas along the property line. Additionally, there is a parking plan that indicates LP or light pole. It's hard to see, but I put it in yellow by the Darrell-Fruh sign that possibly would have provided light to the south entrance that was not constructed.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, could you read the entirety of number six that you did?
Yeah. Protect motor vehicle operators, pedestrians, and adjacent land uses from glare.
Okay, so that, that's specifically protecting them from glare. It's not protecting them, it's protecting them from glare.
We'll go back to, no, um...
I mean, that's what, those were, are the words.
pedestrians from glare. I don't think so. I really, I mean, could have somebody delve into that, but I don't think that we're protecting pedestrians from glare. It's protect motor vehicle operators, pedestrians, and then the adjacent land, like homes on Park Avenue from glare. But the lights are up high enough, so the glare isn't, it's what's going into the home. It wouldn't be the, you know, lights that are lighting up the parking lot that a car would be looking at concerned about glare. But yeah, delve into it, but, and then again, the other part showing that the parking access, which would be your driveway, driveways. And again, the reason I delved into this is, early on, when, when I brought this up, and you said, oh, are you going to let it go? And I'm like, well, doesn't make sense, because I was told the entire parking area had to be, had to have lighting, and, you know, to try to say the driveway isn't part of a parking lot. When it previously, I was told it was part of the parking lot. When I first looked into this, I was told driveways in front of the parking lot. Had no idea someone would try to separate the driveway from a parking lot. But I think this makes it clear that it's the perimeter, and any access to the parking lot has to be lit. And again, you asked if it was dangerous, and I said, yes, it is. You're driving down Park Avenue, and, again, I said, I was in my truck, and there's a car in front of me with the blinker on. I can see that car is going to turn, but they can't see the entrance. And when they do, they stop quickly. I stop quickly, but the car behind me does not, and just barely misses me. It's dangerous. It should be lit, and then again, you're looking at a design, I don't know what, what part of the process this was, where there was a light pole. It's right where the sign is for the Darrell-Fruh building, probably, because that should be lit up as well to identify the property, and that's not lit. And then, would it be enough illumination to light that entrance, possibly? I don't know, but the parking lot is not lit according to our city code, and...
We've had this conversation, Ms. Nelson, that you brought this question forward, city staff reviewed it, our city planners, who know our light standards, and who are, who we pay to represent the city, and put these, put this information together, and come to conclusions, and you asked your question, it was answered. I understand you don't agree with that answer, but the fact remains, you've asked the question, and it was answered, and now we're moving on.
And again, just like the disability parking, it was answered, it was answered inaccurately, and I'm saying this isn't, and it kind of feels like a common sense thing that we would light an entrance, that some...
That's your, that, an opinion, that perhaps you don't like the answer, and I get that. It was answered by our city staff, who are experts in this area, passed on to you, and we're moving on.
And the city staff, that if there was an error, it would have been their error, and you're asking them to see if they aired. There's a conflict there, the lack of check and balance on that as well.
I don't, I don't think our city staff is so far above that. If there was, if there was a mistake, if there is an error, they generally own up to it and they fix it.
Kind of like the disability parking? They owned up to that?
That's wonderful, you keep bringing that up, Sally. We're talking now about lighting at the entrance to the parking lot, and you, the question that you have been asking has been answered.
Yeah, but again, according to our, our city code, it says it needs to be, have illumination, and now you're saying, it doesn't matter that it says it in our city code, it just matters what our planning says, but it says it in our...
And it was basing their answer off of the city code. We're going to move on now, Sally, but thank you for coming again, once again, this evening with your questions. And Carol?
Thank you. As you can see from my shirt, I'm here to talk...
Just so, state your name, just so we have it for the...
Carol DeVries.
Thank you, Carol.
I'm here to talk about the Nine Mile Corridor. I've been walking that area for well over 50 years and more. My two sons played in the creek forever, and I love the area. I'm a biker, but I am against a bike trail through that corridor. For many, many reasons, you've heard a lot of the reasons, but I think it would be a travesty to change what's there now. I understand that the area needs a lot of work for the shoreline, erosion, that type of thing, invasive species, I'm all for that. I did vote for the product, the project, but there was not one thing in the vote that talked about the bike trail. I know it was mentioned in previous publications, but on the ballot itself. And I think that's probably the only reason it passed, is because people didn't realize that the biking part of it was potentially going to be a big part of it. I'm a lot older than all of you, and I just want you to think seriously, when you vote on this, what's going to happen to that area if a bike trail goes through? Think about your children, think about your grandchildren. I've seen what happens throughout my lifetime when a project like that goes through, and it's never for the good in the long term. So that's what I'm asking, is just take a good, hard look at it. Please, don't put that bike trail through there. I understand there's already 12 different entrances to get to the Minnesota River, and they don't have to use that area, so, thank you for listening.
Thank you, and if I could just ask, Carol, I mean, your own personal opinion, if a bike trail was in there, what would be the worst-case scenario of that? Would it be the destruction of habitat? Would it be dogs getting run over by motorcycles? I mean, what, what would be...
Well, I hope it's not motorcycle.
Oh, you never know, you know, it's, those bikers, they interpret things differently.
I know. I walk Highland a lot, so I know.
Yep, I mean, what's your worst-case scenario?
The worst-case scenario would be, because I'm a biker, I know that you can't have the curves like the current path. I mean, the current path isn't like that, of course, but a bike trail would have to be, you would have to straighten it out. You'd have to, perhaps, a lot of that straightening out would be away from the creek itself. So I think, to answer your question, I think there's a few things that would go into that, but those are the, probably, the top two things.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions?
All of yours, if that's...
Yes, please.
Thanks for taking the time to be here, Carol. It's nice to talk to you. The, the overall area of Central Park and Moyer Park and everything is fairly large, and so, when we're talking about a trail, there's, in my mind, it doesn't necessarily have to follow the path of the existing trail today, right? And I, I tend to, I'll just be candid, I tend to share your sentiment that the unique nature of being very close to the creek is not, in my opinion, conducive to bike riding. I think that's a, that makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, right? It doesn't mean that you couldn't put a separate bike path, north and south, that runs through a portion of that territory, because we do have a challenge right now, where north-south, you know, traversing north and south in Bloomington to the Minnesota River Valley, from places like the, you know, Edina and where it connects there, that's a challenge for bikers, right? So, you know, I'm thinking about it a little bit maybe differently than you are. I'm just kind of curious, if you, on the, on the spectrum of no bikes ever, ever, ever anywhere near, to like, yeah, put it right up against the creek, which I also know is not your thing, right? Would you be, would you be amenable, amenable to a separate kind of area where, you know, let's say they have a bikes, places where you could park your bike, and say, here's an entryway into the creek, but you can't take your bike there, you're going to park it, and then you're going to walk into that area?
I would not.
Okay, tell me a little bit more about what the concerns are there, then.
Well, there's already 12 areas. Why add a 13? Number one.
12 areas to Moyer Park, or to the Nine Mile Creek area?
To the Minnesota River.
Sure.
And so, to me, that would just be one more that's not necessary. So, no, I don't, are you saying that one walking path, and over here is a bike path?
I'm speculating, I have no particular idea, but I'm just throwing that out there as an idea.
For, for $20 million, I think the money would be better off having something for children where they can learn water quality, let's say. The school is right there. Bring other schools in. I think that we have to think about our future. We have to think about our children and grandchildren, and generations to come.
Cool, well, thanks for answering the question, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Carol. So, a couple of folks come in late, we've got a couple of minutes, if you want to jump in, or are you just here to listen, or are you here to comment on anything tonight? I'm not making you, you don't have to, but it's a...
Brian Savig, just a quick question. Just before Mike Sable left, I'd asked if there was a possibility of getting the information for the council meetings, the, at least the agenda, not necessarily the packet, out earlier, and you were going to check into that and get back to me? Just wondering what those requirements might be.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Brian, when you say get it out earlier, you mean earlier than the Thursday?
Yes, I mean, I'd like to think you plan more than four days ahead for council meetings.
Well, we actually, we actually have a requirement under state statute that it has to be available 72 hours before the meeting, or three days, I think it says three days, right? We have interpreted it 72 hours. And we, so we actually exceed what's required under state statute by getting it out four days ahead of time. Based on schedule of meetings and other factors, doing so earlier is, is challenging for operations around here. The, the amount of work that it takes to turn around issues from one week to the next is often more than what we could accomplish in a day or two. So, you know, to get the public, to get the packet out on a Thursday, it has to be reviewed by people on a Wednesday, which means the submitters have to put it in by Tuesday, so there's a cascading effect going backwards. So, I would say, unless the council feels strongly about this, we, I don't foresee moving up the, the release of information before that.
And I'm not saying a finished agenda necessarily, but one that gives you like, three weeks out, two weeks as a minimum, and potentially, and things could move if you don't get the packet done. I understand that, but you're asking this, a lot of the citizens, sometimes these packets are 600, 800 pages. So that means, well, us wrestle with the same...
I was going to say, imagine, oh, council, oh, yes.
There goes your weekend, right?
Councilmember Loman, a quick question, then we got to wrap up here.
I understood your question, when you asked it that time back, was more so kind of, you know, a skeleton agenda, not so much the raw content of it, because I know that our assistant city manager would have responded the same way that our city manager responded today, if you would have asked that then, so that was more so kind of a conceptual agenda. Is there any possibility that it may change, and there may become some concerns with that, if there was a conceptual agenda that could, at least maybe on a Tuesday, or a Monday? I think that was the gist of your, your question at that point in time.
And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Councilmember Loman, if it's, if it's just a forecasting agenda, the, we provide that information in a report that goes to the council every Friday. So it's in the back of what we call Bloomington This Week, so... So we have upcoming agendas in there. There's, there's a fair amount of movement, but we know more than a, you know, four days out what's going to be on the agenda, because we have to prep for it, so.
And we publish both the agenda and the agenda packet, right? So I think it's just that, the agenda portion?
Correct.
Yep, okay, we're going to wrap up, and, and I will say, I hear what you're saying, councilmember, and I hear what you're saying, Brian, but I guarantee we'd send out a shell that we had three weeks in advance, and if we changed one thing, the pitchforks and torches would be out. I guarantee you of that.
And that's why I worded it the way I did.
Yeah.
Probably something come with an H in the fourth.
But his friends will.
Thank you all for speaking this evening, thanks for joining us. Council, with our work here concluded, I'd like for a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned, we will see you downstairs. Thanks, all.